Ms. Yak, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter. Mr. Young.
President.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath. Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Ma'am Miller.
After Ms. Moulton, please.
Ms. Moulton and then Mr. Young.
I'd like to excuse Ms. Cleveland McGrath from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to excuse Ms. Cleveland McGrath. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Young.
Ma'am Miller, I'd like to exclude Mr. Carter from the meeting tonight again. He's serving the country in training and just wanted to put that out there again. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McDougal to excuse Mr. Carter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, a motion carries. Our first item is the City Council will now need to enter into a closed session regarding collective bargaining topics per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 140. The length of the closed session will be thirty minutes, after which the council will return to the council chambers. No action will be taken as part of the closed session. So we'll see you in thirty minutes. Thank you.
I could, I guess I could. I could give you a little bit with the lease agreement, you know.
Okay, the City Council has returned from closed session and we will now re-enter the regular open meeting with agenda item number three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me in the pledge?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
I move to add item eight E to the agenda under Other Business, which would be consideration of Resolution Number thirty-one seventeen regarding collective bargaining.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Young to add item eight E, or Resolution thirty-one seventeen, collective bargaining agreement between City of Anacortes and Teamsters Local two thirty-one. Any additional discussion for that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we'll add that agenda item. Thank you. Moving on to item four, which is announcements and committee reports. A couple of quick announcements from me. Thank you, Mr. Young, for counting down the, for the Easter egg hunt on Friday. I think it was well attended and you, you're all in one piece, so you didn't get run over. So, good to, good to see. Also, a spring cleanup, one of my favorite events. I was sorry to miss that by our wonderful Public Works Department and our Ops Department on Saturday. Had two-hundred-and-sixteen customers came in, sixty yards of yard waste and fifteen, over fifteen tons of solid waste brought in to cleaning up the town. So, thank you very much for that extra work and thanks to all those who participated. Last announcement is you can all look forward to receiving the latest copy of A Town is Our Town magazine. Should be in your mailbox no later than next week. But if you can't wait till it comes in your mailbox, there is an online version that is already published and you can preview that. So, that is it from me, I think, and we are on to for a planning committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Planning Committee, Ms. Moulton and I met just before this meeting. I think Ms. Cleland McGrath was able to phone in just for the very end of the meeting, but otherwise wasn't there for most of it. Talked about a couple of things. First of all, our proposed lease of the cinema building to the arts, Anacortes Arts Festival for a community arts center. As y'all might recall, in November, November twenty-eighth, the Anacortes Arts Festival made its first presentation to council about their request to assign the lease to them, because we own the ground and an independent third party owns the building. So, we met four days later, the Planning Committee did, after being designated by council as someone to go talk to the Arts Festival about the lease, on December second. And we hashed out some details about what we thought should be included in such a lease. Sometime in February, we got a draft lease from the Arts Festival. And so, we met two weeks ago to go over their proposed lease. There are a number of terms that concern us and weren't really consistent with what we came up with on December second. So, we asked for a meeting with the Arts Festival and we will be meeting next Monday to talk to them and see what, what it is we can do to figure this out and get that project moving forward. We also talked about our proposed lease with Habitat for Humanity for the parcel on West Fifth Street that they will be developing as five cottages. And they had a couple of example ground leases that they'd gotten from other organizations in other jurisdictions. We think that those were really pretty complicated and too complicated for what we're proposing here. So, we're going to propose a much simpler form ground lease that basically says, here's the parcel, we want permanent affordability, we want, you know, you to design and build facility substantially similar to what we've already seen, and we don't need to be involved beyond that. And then, I think, our final item, we talked about MJB and their proposed development and the process associated with that. I think it's fair to say that we still don't quite know exactly what that process is going to look like. They have a couple of options for how they can pursue that, all of which involve a public process that end up before the City Council. But they have a couple of ways to proceed. So, at this point, we don't know very much. But, you know, we do have established view corridors in that area and we could consider alterations to those, but those require process. And so, we want to reassure the public that that's a required component under our existing code. More to come, I guess, as MJB figures out exactly what process they want to pursue.
Thanks. Next up is item four B, Port City Liaison Committee Report.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
If I might, before I give that report, I just wanted to add one additional comment to the Easter egg hunt with the kids. It was hilarious, literally hilarious. They were serious about getting those Easter eggs and I could see the intensity in their face. And, you know, I started out giving the rules and I said, you know, I'm gonna go from ten to one. When I said ten, they took off running. And it was a massive push. It was hilarious. But it was such a wonderful turnout. Talked to many of the families that were there and it was just heartfelt and warming for a city as Anacortes to continue to have such a thing. And so, I thought I'd share that with you, but I laughed as hard as I could. Onto the Port City meeting, liaison meeting. We held it here at City Hall. There in attendance, of course, was Mayor Miller, myself, Planning Manager Libby Grange, Mr. Lunsford was there, as was the Port attendees, Director Dan Warra, Environmental Person Brenda Treadwell, John Dumas and Cassie Novak. Part of what we discussed was it's always about giving an update as to where we are, keeping the communication going, making sure that everyone understands, you know, some of the things that's happening within each of the organizations. So, we did a rounding discussion. The Port started out about, the Port started out about the West Basin development and indicated that the bathroom was closed at the Harbor Masters' office. And I'm not sure if they're going to reopen that, but that was one of the things that came up. And they also mentioned the fact of their number one issue was tourism, twelve million dollars and trying to address the needs of those people that are coming in on their boats, who are already there and have spots and their customers, their tenants. And so, that's how they're trying to address that. They also mentioned a bit about the neighborhood update that they were having on their site plans. They are implementing their development on the North Basin in stages. And so, they had a neighborhood discussion. The Port just entered into agreement to have fast and regular electric vehicle chargers installed. So, that should be something on Port property and that should be something that, coming forward, that will be somewhat of a draw, I think, for people coming through Anacortes, whether they're going to the ferry or even living here in Anacortes. And so, we talked about that. Other topics came up was the trussel and mentioning that, you know, how it is formerly being open and how exciting it is for people who, in having it open, realizing that the utility is been something that was missed while we were closed. Did an update on the fiber. I think that the mayor crowed just a bit about the nineteen hundred customers at fiber and that was a wonderful thing. And we talked about the police vacancies and opportunities for hire, Stabrix Marina, and their purchase of the old Lubriks property and just some conversations that's going on between the city itself and them in trying to move forward our collective agenda. Additional to that, there were some updates on T Avenue update and, you know, I think everybody's aware and many have an opinion about T Avenue. But the good news was that services were being offered and I think it was pointed out, some took the service and some did not. And so, anyway, at issue was mental health, you know, drugs, trying to figure out housing, trash, all of the things that's associated with it. And let's see, what else did we have? That's, I think that's pretty much it. You know, we just went over all the issues that's affecting the Port and the city in our continued collaboration together to work together on how we might go forward and push our city to where it wants to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, oh, is Planning Commission appointment. And that is me. And first of all, for this appointment, I would like to thank Gary Malinow for his service to the Planning Committee. I know he wanted to stick it out longer, but for personal reasons, he needed to resign. But it is my recommendation that the following appointment to the Planning Commission be confirmed by council, and that's William McCombs. And he will complete, he would complete the remainder of Gary's term. Mr. Young.
I move to confirm the appointment of William McCombs as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McDougal. And I will point out that Mr. McCombs is here, so thank you. Thank you for volunteering. Appreciate that. So, a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. McDougal. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you and thank you, Mr. McCombs. All right, we are on to item five, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight. And I have one signed up, Pat Gardner. Come on up. And the topic is MJB.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and happy day after Easter to you. Just, I mentioned it about a month ago, three weeks ago, about hopefully getting a plan. I know MJB, you answered the question earlier, that MJB, we don't have the total plan on what they're going to do. But some layout, mapping or something in the paper or posted for the general public to see, you know, just some diagram. I do see people walking and bicycling using the sidewalks, which is, you know, that's there. But just some sort of aerial view or something that's going on. And just off the subject, a different subject that Mr. Young just brought up, I was down at T Avenue briefly a couple of days ago. I think they're taking up camp around those facilities, big time, that you had mentioned. They've all congregated around there and it looks pretty bad in that one little pocket still. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to know if there's going to be, if you can answer that question. If there is a plan for the mapping or a graph, can you, is there anybody?
Not, not going to be able to answer that tonight, because it is, again, private property. It is zoned, marine mixed use. There are some concepts about what they're going to do, but they don't, they don't have a complete plan yet. They're in the permitting process.
Yeah, I under, I understand that. But is some sort of aerial graph? So...
Well, so, I guess what I'm trying to say, from a city's perspective, I can't, I can't render what they're going to do on private property.
Oh, I understand. But the streets...
But we can certainly ask them that question and see if they're willing to...
Let them know that the public is interested. Yeah, I mean...
Yeah. Oh, there, I know there's much interest in the MJB project. Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. I don't have anybody else signed up. Is there anybody else who wanted to address the council on anything that's not on our agenda? Okay, online. All right, I'm going to move on to item six, which is our consent agenda, consent agenda items A and B.
Mayor Miller, I move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Moulton to approve consent agenda items A and B. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are on to item seven A. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing amending the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-eight capital facilities plan. This is continued from our April third public hearing. And Mr. Hoagland's going to kick this one off and backed up, I'm sure, by Mr. Lunsford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and you've actually covered what I wanted to make sure was pointed out tonight. This is a continued public hearing from last week. The city's municipal code for CFP amendments require a public hearing and a two-week comment period. So, the comment period will run through the end of this week. So, if you wanted to, you could leave this public hearing open until next Monday. After this, we'll have the first read of the ordinances and then bring them back for consideration next Monday.
And typically, we like to leave the public hearing open to make sure there's any opportunity for members of the public to chime in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Were you, were you going to do any kind of presentation or we're just saying everybody remembers what we did last week and we're going to...
I'd be happy to move on to the first read of the, of the ordinances if council is ready for that.
Sure.
So, the CFP amendment is done in conjunction with a budget amendment, the regular operating budget amendment. So, we have both tonight for the first read. The eight hundred thousand identified here in ordinance forty forty-seven, that would be amending the capital facilities plan. I wanted to point out, some of the council members may remember, we used to include in our CFP everything that we could think of for this very reason. Generally, in order to apply for a grant, it needs to be included in our capital facilities plan. But it is a bit inconsistent with the WAC that drives the CFP, which identifies that resources for which there is reasonable assurance of availability. So, we stopped that practice of just putting everything that we could think of into the CFP, but it does require us to come back for amendment from time to time. For example, when a grant comes up for the Depot Pavilion. So, so that's what's in the, that's the only item in the CFP amendment. Along with that, the CFP amendment is adopted in conjunction with the operating budget amendment, which is identified in ordinance forty forty-eight. So, the eight hundred thousand for the Depot Pavilion, there are a couple of other items that, kind of housekeeping items that are included. The council may remember, late last year, we got a donation for the police department to purchase a UAV. That purchase actually came in in twenty twenty-three, so we just want to roll over that, that budget authority for that. Likewise, the body camera requirement in the police department, we got a grant in twenty twenty-one for that where we got the entire grant amount, but we're making progress payments on that. So, an additional eighteen thousand in budget authority for that. And then, to capture the purchase of the Station Three at one-point-eight million dollars, that's also included in this first quarter budget amendment. So, just a few items in addition to the eight hundred thousand for Depot Pavilion.
All right. And then, just to wrap up the administrivia of the, the reason we're having the, the public hearing, the public hearing is the change for the Depot Pavilion part and then the other parts. And again, these are all items for discussion. And, but before, and I don't intend to close the public hearing for that portion of it, but... the public hearing for that portion of it, but it might be a good opportunity if any members of the public might want to comment on, on, since you already jumped ahead, which is great to this stuff, any members of the public want to either comment on the capital facilities plan, public hearing, or amending the capital facilities plan that includes these items. And then council discussion, I think we could probably, I think council's probably capable of discussing all of, either, either and or. And I think probably to clarify, the county grant, the requirement of the capital facilities grant is for getting government grants, not necessarily like an LTAC grant.
That's, yeah, absolutely. That's exactly right. Yep.
So it would not be required for that, but it is required because we're potentially going to look for a county grant. Council, questions, comments?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
You know, just to, you know, discuss it just a little bit, I think at the end of the day, the challenge, at least from the Pavilion standpoint, I mean, the drone, we've got donations, all of the other things in this modification, but, you know, from the Depot and the Pavilion, I guess the thing that I, I will miss greatly about the, you know, the facility on Port property is that it's just been absolutely iconic for our town and this hometown venue. Us not having that and all the attractions that went to, you know, the, you know, to that, to the shed, you know, I just think that it's a lost opportunity. I think they've had so many wonderful events down there and it's been such a big draw for people everywhere. So, in lieu of the Port closing down use of that, we don't have one in our town. And so, it's a way that I believe we can address it and also allow people to continue to come and use the facilities, not just for the farmer's market, which is huge and a wonderful way to have that, but it will also allow other activities too. And I think that that's a draw for the town itself, so I'm a big advocate of it simply because I really believe that we need it. And, you know, when I got here, you know, that transit shed was, I thought a little, my opinion of it grew as I settled into my life here in Anacortes and it became so dear. So, so, but I'm saying all that to say that I just think these are things that whether, however we get there, is things that we need to do in order to see the possibilities and to help our city move forward.
Thank you, thank you for getting that discussion going. And I will remind council and members of the public, I don't, I don't see the commission, the Port Commission or the Port changing their mind. They do intend to close the transit shed to events at the end of the, end of this year. But if I was debating this on council, whether it's 70% trying to fill in the gap of the transit shed or, or 70% trying to, to fill a need of the farmer's market, I don't know. It's up, you know, that's certainly good things to debate, or 90% or 50/50%, I don't know. Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So, I like the concept of doing a covered additional structure at the Depot Pavilion. I still don't feel like I have enough information to say, yes, let's find $800,000 for this. And I know we talked about it being chicken and the egg and we don't want to use parks' reserves, we, we need to just kind of go for it. But I feel like anything that we try to plan as a city, it's, it's really foundational and beneficial to have an actual plan before we say, we're going to come up with $800,000 for this. We have so many other needs that are unaddressed, for example, the Hart Lake Plan, just to name one, the Gueimas Channel Trail, we have all these other things that we've determined are city priorities for various reasons that I don't need to go into, that I just, I'm just not, I'm just not seeing it. I'm not seeing this, and I know MJB, we're hoping will build an event center and that might not be till 2025. This would not certainly be built before 2024, that I can tell, and I don't see, I haven't heard anything about a kitchen, which the one there already is not highly functional, about bathrooms. Anyway, I have a lot of reasons why I think this is just not really thought through to the degree that I'm willing to say, yes, let's spend $800,000 on this.
So again, I remind the council that this is not a request to spend $800,000. This is a request to put it in the capital facilities plan so we could potentially ask for .09 county money, which we do not have anything else that we were asking for from the county for .09 grant money.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, actually, a quick question on that, that county money. It, it's a grant that's sitting out there. Is it, like, is it basically ours for the taking? We just need to do the paperwork to get it in the capital facilities plan and apply? Or is it a competitive grant? Can it be used for anything else or is this kind of the only use?
Mr. Lunsford's ready to...
I like your thinking, it's ours for the taking, but we do have to apply because it is competitive. So we've gone into it before, that's how we got the restroom on the plaza and other city projects. I can't think of which one now, but it's a competitive grant that's for economic development throughout the county. We've been successful before. I think this has a good chance because it's involving not only farmer's market here in town, but then employing elements from around the county that come to the market and sell their wares.
Nice.
And being able to extend that season has been very attractive to the commissioners. The event center, we were Anacortes-focused, but would also have a, a business and economic benefit to the city. So that, that's what they're looking for and that would help our status in the, in the competition.
Got it. Okay, and, and it would be used, I mean, we could only use it for the thing which we applied for, which is, or we would submit an application.
Correct.
Okay. And does it cost us anything to submit the application other than some, basically, time spent by staff?
No, no, there is a, there is a small match, but that would be if, say, if you get this, I want to say it's, I want to say it's 30% or less of a match. I might have to go back and check the application, but then we've used LTAC money in the past, we've used REIT money in the past for that match.
Did you say...
And then staff time as well.
30% or less or three?
I'll get you that answer tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't want to misquote.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
.09 money, didn't we also get $500,000 for fiber from the .09 funds?
Ms. Shu.
Yes, last year, the, the city was awarded $500,000 for Gueimas View construction. One of the requirements to be able to even put in an application for that grant is that the project has to be included in your capital facilities plan.
I wrote the application for this grant money when I was at the county, because it's in the statute, the requirement to be compliant with the capital facilities plan or the consolidated economic development element said. Seems to me that fiber is an ongoing expense. Maybe the county might not be inclined to give us any more money for fiber, but we could ask for more money for fiber. I, I'm similarly not ready to approve $800,000 for this because we don't even have a design. And the design that we have seen, which Mr. Lunsford presented last week, I really don't like because I don't think it respects the architectural character of the Depot Plaza. I'm willing to be convinced that there is a design out there that could work. I can't imagine what it is, but an event center is a outright permitted use of lodging tax funds. So there really is no chicken and the egg problem. We could spend lodging tax funds right away with approval of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to do the design on a facility. And then we could make a determination as to whether we really wanted to do it or not. And I think that's the appropriate course. I mean, we know we're going to spend a bunch of money on fiber this year. There are certainly other things that we're going to spend money on it or could. Seems to me as well that the Port did what they needed to do in setting a deadline for termination of the use of the transit shed as an event center, because deadlines motivate people to figure out alternatives. If we went to them and said, look, we do have an alternative, I bet that they would extend that deadline. It's just, I, the steps here are figure out what our needs, our requirements are, figure out how that's going to work and a location, and then do the design. And we've got money available to do the design. In fact, I think our lodging tax reserves probably would cover the entire amount. But we don't need to get there yet. I think what we need to get to is a, a design that respects the Depot, that functions there, or chooses a different location if a different location works better.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
My colleagues make tremendous valued points, absolutely, they do. I differ just a little bit in the thought that, you know, we don't know what MJB property will end up doing. From any of the drawings that I've seen rendered thus far, there is a central nucleus of event space, you know, for hotels and wherever, but that's kind of encapsulated in their property. And the detachment from downtown and what's happening on this end of the city, you know, at least if that drawing goes forward, would be of minor concern for me because my, my interest would be in how do we help downtown thrive? How do we use the, the Depot and those development of the Port? How do we connect those together? Those have been ongoing conversations we've had for quite a while. So, you know, short of us having something that we can begin to use that links downtown and the North Basin development more succinctly, you know, I'm just not sure if the belief that MJB property, I'm not saying that that's what Ms. Moulton is saying, I'm not saying that, I wanted to be clear. But what I am saying though is that MJB property on their private parcel of land, they're going to develop what they think they need that's best for them. And we, as a city, have to do what we think is also best for us and work as succinctly as we can to try to make it work for everybody, not only the continuity of their property, but as it connects to the North Basin, downtown, and even south commercial. Those are the things that we're considering. I think at this point here, if, if we believe that we have a chance at a grant, I think we should go for it. Because waiting until we come up with a design that everybody can agree on to go for the grant, I, I think that that's putting the cart before the horse, because it would be ideal if we had some thoughts as to what it could look like. Yes, I agree with that. I think that those are rational discussions. But right now, we have an opportunity to move forward. I think that if we can find grant money somewhere, just like Mr. Walters alluded to, the LTAC dollars that are also there. I am but one member of LTAC, but it does meet certain needs. But if the county is offering or there's an opportunity for other grants out there to help fund this, we won't know unless it's in the capital facility plan. You know, there are things that we've reviewed that's been in the capital facilities plan before that are no longer at the top of our agenda in the stratus. So, I'm saying there's really no reason why we can't, I think, go forward in putting this in the capital facility plan and seeing what resources are out there and where might we find them in order to make it happen. I too am not about just spending, you know, city resources, but look at the benefit that we're going to get. I just think that there are no guarantees that any development will come in any of the other parts of the city, whether it's a hotel or whether it's a convention center or whatever that is. What we know we have control of is this opportunity and we know we have a need and we know that we have people that will support it. And so, if the only thing we have to do is put it in the capital facilities plan and, and we can put it in with conditions to see, you know, but there's, I just think that to wait till there's a clarity of drawings, that's so far down the line that we just need to put it in the plan and see what opportunities there are, and then we, as a council and, and public decide, does it meet the aesthetic design of the look we're looking for? Is it, does it meet the utility that we're looking for? Does it even meet the cost basis when we see what resources we have? It may be fully funded and do a great deal for our city. So I, I just don't think that we should wait on that end. We can discuss whether or not it does that at some later point. Thank you.
So, maybe, I know at least three staff members here could probably answer this question, so anybody jump in the timeline for, since as Mr. Walters pointed out, timelines are a good way to motivate folks and, and that's certainly what has motivated us to take a look at this, although I have not heard from any elected members of the Port Commission or the Executive Director that this is a flexible timeline, but maybe, hopefully you can tell me you've heard some different, different things. But anyway, we're working towards that kind of timeline as, as part of this project. But the question is, .09 money timeline, anybody? And I know at least three of you could answer that.
The grant is due on the 28th of this month.
Okay.
So, and then we would have to, you'd have to make your decision before that, so by the 24th.
So again, if any, any member of the council has a better idea for what we can apply for .09 funds, I'm, I'm happy to, to take that and try to turn that around. Mr. McDougal.
Another quick question. Let's say we proceed and we apply for the grant and we win. Are we then committed to doing something? What happens if we decide, oh, we actually don't like the design, don't want to go forward?
So those are conversations I'm having with the county because I anticipated you might have some of those questions. So, as soon as we're able to finish those, I can give you the number for the match and then say how long we have to, say, spend the money.
Okay.
And if there's, you know, if there's a desire, you know, how that would, how that would play out. So I'm trying to, I can probably, if I hear from them tomorrow, I'll just send you all an email.
Okay.
And include the mayor and we just can have that conversation.
Got it. So, like, if we were to decide, actually, we're not going to go forward, we just kind of write, write a check back?
You don't, you don't get, yeah, it's not that way. It's a reimbursement grant, so if you just, you would waive it if you decided, if council decided they want to do it and they would fund it to someone else, but they probably wouldn't look too favorably on that, so.
Okay.
Try not to get into that realm if we can.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, is there, Mr. Lunsford, if you, or, yeah, Mr. Hoagland, is there any disadvantaged, I guess, given the shortness of timeline and if council votes to move it forward, is there any additional, I guess what I'm looking for is, given your explanation that you'll be giving to council, I'm worried about the shortness of time for you to pull together everything that you need to, should council decide that we want to move this forward and such that it gives you enough time in order to, you know, have a fantastic presentation as you always do. But I'm just, I just think waiting sometimes, given the timelines that we're on, it's just put, adds additional unnecessary pressure to complete something in lieu of everything else we have going on as a city.
So, so the grant is written.
Okay.
It's just not applied for.
Good.
So we just, we're, we're looking into some drawings, as Mr. Miller and I talked about last week.
Right.
But the grant is written. Essentially, we, Ms. Shu and I have collaborated on it in the past because there's, you know, we're always looking for opportunities. So we have the information, we have the farmer's markets letter of support, but we just won't submit unless there's, it's on the CFP, so...
And would you, in, in your discussions with the county, will it also include discussions about are we wedded to a specific design, you know, rather than the concept and some initial draft drawings because of what, I think, to speak to Ms. Moulton's question and Mr. Walters' questions about aesthetics, which are, you know, valid issues, and so trying to figure out if that in the application, if it does not wed us to a specific design, that allows us as a council and public input to be able to tweak, to make changes, to find a way for it to, you know, meet the needs that we want as a city?
Sure. No, excellent questions, Mr. Young. Thank you. So when we did the restroom project, we didn't give them exact... So when we did the restroom project, we didn't give them exactly what we were going to build. We gave them precisely what we were looking at doing, because we, you know, had to check and see what was available through the market. So the restroom that was, is down there now, was a custom unit we didn't know was available at the time, but we told them at the county what we were aiming to do, the size, the elements, and some of that was provisional. And so as we were awarded the grant, then we went through the planning process, created what we wanted with the manufacturer, and then had it delivered. So it wasn't, when we wrote the grant, we knew the concept of what we wanted, roughly square footage and the services it would provide, and, but we didn't know exactly what the manufacturer would be able to do for us until we had the money and entered into a planning arrangement with them, and that's what you see down there now. But that didn't exist in that specificity when we wrote the grant.
So that sort of addresses part of Ms. Moulton's question, you know, about, you know, it just not being sure if this is, you know, something we really need, and I think that's speaking to an issue of need, but it doesn't commit us by putting it in the capital facility plan and seeing if we could find grant and grant dollars into Mr. Walters' questions of aesthetic value, you know, I mean, does it, how does it fit in with the flavor of our town? All of those can be worked out, and we will know where we are. So that, you gave an example with the restroom, excuse me, you gave an example with the restroom of how that process has already been implemented, and the county itself were okay with that.
Correct. So, right, so they, we said we were going to put it in a restroom, we put it in, and it wasn't, it was, it evolved into what it is now. In this situation, both you and Ms. Moulton are correct in that we would have to put something in that resembled the, what we applied for. It may not be exactly like that, because plans change and you find out new things as you go through your planning process and permit processes. But we would want to put something in. So as I said to Mr. McDougal, we don't, if, we would want to have councils buy in before we applied, that you were committed to letting us do this very thing, you know, put in a shelter of some sort. What it actually will look like can be developed through a planning process, but we'd want it to be approximately 5,000 or 6,000 square feet, like we discussed, and some of the amounts. But those are the questions we're going to ask the county, per Mr. McDougal's questions this week, and try to get you specific answers, so you have better information on which to deliberate. Is that fair? Okay.
All right. Mr. Walters?
It is pretty clear to me that it's a bad practice to apply for a grant for a facility that we may not actually commit to building. So, yeah, so for me, the design really matters. If the design works, then great, seems like it's a good use of funds. If the design doesn't work, I think that there will be a lot of unhappy people. I mean, there are not people sitting in the audience jumping out of their seats right now. That doesn't mean they're not out in our neighborhoods, who really are concerned about the depot maintaining its historical character. And again, I just can't envision how this works, which is not to say it couldn't work, but I don't want this to get too far away from us. It's in the capital facilities plan, we've gotten a grant for $800,000, we've amended the budget, like, we've done all the pieces, aside from awarding the contract to actually do it. And if we do actually get the grant, we will be pressured to say, yeah, you got to go do this, even though you don't like the design, even though the design damages the historical character of the depot, or maybe even just isn't in keeping with the design of the depot. So I prefer not to do all those steps, like, let's just do step one, figure out a design, a shell, and make sure that it's consistent with what the needs are. You know, we need to run Saturday events. I am not confident that that is compatible with a farmer's market that ends at 2:00 P.M. So I wouldn't approve these items right now. I do have a separate question, though, maybe from Mr. Hugland, about the long-term loan for Station 3. What is that exactly? Could you describe exactly how that's going to function?
Yeah, so the purchase, the cash we used to make the actual purchase just has come out of cash reserves. I don't feel at this point that we have sufficient cash reserves not to replenish that, but we can get through the operating period.
Cash reserves from what fund?
General fund.
Okay.
The, when we first started looking at options for the debt instrument, the, well, the market has changed pretty significantly over the last few months since we first started looking at that. So we're kind of waiting for things to settle down a little bit. But the options we've looked at, we've talked to both our bond underwriter and a local banker. We know we can do either a commercial loan locally or go into the, into the bond market with, within a pretty short period of time to be able to replenish those cash reserves before the end of the year.
So then that's a placeholder?
Correct.
More or less, at this point.
Yeah, that's, that's right. So whatever debt instrument we got would be booked into that same, that same revenue line, so to speak.
Okay, so the other big set of expenditures, though, from Fund 001 this year is fiber, so why wouldn't we apply for .09 money for fiber, like we have successfully in the past?
Ms. Hsu, you want to take that one?
And when we were thinking about it strategically, as we were looking at what the applications were, we had put in a request for capital appropriations for the depot pavilion through the state. This seemed, we were looking at LTAC funds, and then we were looking at the .09 grant opportunities to help offset a lot of the costs associated with this. We thought it made sense if that was going to be the priority this year, to not put in a request specifically for fiber. The majority of the expenses for the Gwamis expansion have been accounted for, and now we're working toward the EDA area, and a lot of that is going to be through the EDA grant.
Well, the, I'm sorry, the expenditures for the backbone have been completed, but not for individual connections, which are substantial. I mean, I'm just suggesting that that is another thing, expenses that are baked in, that we know we are going to incur.
.09 has some specific business, has some specific economic development requirements, so I think Ms. Hsu could elaborate on that. Sorry, I probably cut you off, you were about to say that.
Thank you. Yes, I was also just going to share that, so we've been very clear when we've been working through granting agencies, that they're not interested in doing anything that is on private property. So they're interested in helping with that backbone construction, but not anything that once it crosses over onto private property for the actual installation. So that's why we weren't thinking about it from that perspective.
Is there a match requirement for the EDA grant?
They are doing, yes, yes, there is a match requirement for the EDA area. And I just was looking at the .09 grant, and they said that, you know, they'd certainly give priority to projects that have match available, but it doesn't spell out what the actual requirement for a match is.
Just, to sum up, it just seems to me like there's still a possibility there, and we could avoid some general revenue expenses if we went after more money for fiber through the .09 money.
I think that you bring up a good point. We're trying to think strategically in regard to the depot pavilion, and trying to consolidate the funds that would be available for that. If a decision is made that we're not going to go that route, I think that there's still time to look at other options.
Mr. McDougal?
Miller, thank you, Mr. Walters, for bringing up fiber. Actually, I was thinking a few minutes ago, when there was a question about, like, what other possibilities could there be? And I know that this isn't within our priorities for sort of in-town build-out, but could a proposal be done for building fiber on Gwamis Island? That would be potentially, you know, if it's funded by the county, that's a whole bunch of free customers, essentially, so free revenue. Granted, you know, we would have to figure out the schedule for something like that, but curious if that would be a possibility.
Ms. Hsu, you want to try that one? We hear about Gwamis fiber a lot.
We certainly do, and I'm looking on my phone, I was, I got locked out of my computer, so I'm looking at the application, very small here. It does have to be a part of the overall economic development plan. Priority is given to projects that are located within the incorporated or unincorporated UGA. Impreface is given to projects that have matching revenue. They're really looking for things that create or retain family wage jobs, and so that is one of the benefits of when we're looking at the farmer's market and think about the incubator foundation that that creates. I think that we have nine or 11 different businesses that we've, nine, thank you, businesses that we've been able to identify that started out as a stall at the farmer's market that now have storefronts. Those are nice things to be able to talk about and support. So I don't know, I certainly would have to look at it, haven't thought about it in terms of the Gwamis conversation.
Okay. Well, I mean, the within UGA sort of requirement or guideline sounds like a fairly straightforward, probably not the priority, but thank you.
And if I recall, one of the reasons we were successful on the .09 grant for fiber last year, was that, last year, was there was an economic element that, in that area that we applied for. But I can't recall exactly what it was. Mr. Young?
Yeah, I just thought I'd make one more round for it tonight, and I'll let it go after that for a moment. You know, we have an opportunity, and we give ranking to those things in the capital facility plan. This is no different than any of that. And at the end of the day, I think that when we look at the possibility of grant dollars and being able to find a way to attract people to our town and our area, there's a hole. And this is in an immediate sense, something that we can begin to do with not a tremendous amount of cost associated with it. It is real money, but at the end of the day, there are opportunities out there that we can discover by simply putting it in the capital facilities plan. That's just it. All of the other hyperbole about what might happen, or what should happen, or what could happen, is no different than the issues we deal with on a day-to-day basis by running a city. And so I think that in putting this into play, we can find out what resources are available. And it'll just create an opportunity for us to make a decision as the legislative body, whether it's in the best needs of our city. And so, you know, for me, there's just not a real, real reason why we can't just put it in, given we have a great opportunity, and make the determination whether or not it's achievable. I think that that's good due diligence as legislative body to make that determination. The argument of whether or not it's a priority, given the priorities that we already have, that is a determined factor, yes. But everything else in the capital facility plan is ranked. This could not be any different than that. And the only thing inhibiting us from being able to go after those dollars is it being in the plan. Thank you.
Thanks. So just a reminder, this is just a discussion item for tonight, I think all three, what, 7A, 8A, and B, which, we're well into items 8A and B also, okay. This is a discussion item, and I would strongly encourage council to reach out to their constituents, and reach out to me, reach out to John and Steve, and what are the design, you know, what are the hard points on the design with the pavilion? What are the, what are the good points? What are you, what do you think is more important? I'm very interested, you know, whether it's filling the role of the transit shed, or filling the role of the, because I've had that internal debate as well, what's, you know, and that's kind of, the timeliness is being driven by the transit shed. As far as filling a perfect role of the farmer's market, I'm also interested in all that, so please keep the discussion going even after tonight, because we'll keep this public hearing open for the CFP, and we'll also keep the discussion open for these quarterly budget updates. And was there anything else, Mr. Hugland, on those three items? 7A, 8A, and B?
That's it from my end.
Okay. All right, well, I think they're a good discussion, and we'll keep discussing this. All right, we'll move on to item 8C. It's what we've all been waiting for, all these Public Works professionals in the back of the chamber getting ready to give us the quarterly update. And Henry, you didn't start walking soon enough for me to keep talking about Public Works and all the great things that they're doing, because you're going to tell us all the great things that we've been doing in the quarterly update. So, Mr. Hash, you are on.
Good evening, thank you, mayor and council. Yes, you are correct, we can talk about all the wonderful things done by Public Works, but I need more than hour and a half that you have given me.
I don't think that was the arrangement, but keep trying.
Glad to join you here with our wonderful division managers and Public Works administrator. They'll have their chance to talk about their divisions. The council has expressed a desire to be updated about Public Works projects and what we do on a regular basis, and we're happy to be here before you tonight, and we'll come back to you on a quarterly basis. Before we talk about our projects and accomplishments, I would like to talk a little bit about Public Works. What is Public Works? Who we are and what we do? Many people think Public Works has something to do with roads. We do, but Public Works is more than just roads. In fact, on a daily basis, I've challenged many people to tell me that they had one day without using the services of Public Works. It's almost impossible, from the minute you wake up in the morning, using the bathroom, taking a shower, making your coffee, until the minute that you go back to bed, you brush your teeth using water provided by Public Works, and everything in between. You go out to work, drive on the roads that are maintained and built by Public Works, traffic light, walking on beautiful sidewalk. This building is maintained by Public Works, so everything is about Public Works on a your daily basis. But this essential services that is provided to all our citizens on a daily basis are impossible without the help and support of all the hard-working people we have, the Public Works employees, they have great teamwork and customer service philosophy, which I truly appreciate. Now that we have talked about what Public Works does, we can talk a little bit about the structure of Public Works. Now I may need Sidney's help in here to show you.
Sidney's going to bail you out and set up your presentation.
Public Works' structure, there are six divisions within Public Works, administration, and then we have wastewater, and you see the same, just there are no particular order, wastewater, water. Resource conservation, that we don't necessarily have the position for, there may be some changes in there, and the operation facilities, GIS and asset management and engineering And each of them, of course, are managed by our division managers, they're sitting there, and I will introduce them to you later. The division managers will be talking about their divisions and accomplishments and what's going on. I'll tell you a little bit about the administration division. Sidney Neal is our Public Works administrator, and she is the one that keeps me in line. Thank you, Sidney, for helping tonight, for putting all of this presentation together. We are really very fortunate to have Sidney as part of our team. In administration division, we implement the mayor and council's policies, guidelines, and directions. Based on the mayor and council's goals and priorities, we develop our policies, guidelines, and direction to assure that we are all pulling in the same direction. We work with all local, state, federal agencies to receive grants and support to move our projects. projects forward. I strongly believe that it's all about building relationship, and we are fortunate to have established wonderful relationship with all stakeholders. That is why our projects are moving forward in a pretty good pace. One of the things we do is customer service. Customer service, you know, is your priority, so it is our priority as well. As city government, we are in the business of providing services. Providing great customer service is our number one priority, and our staff work hard to achieve this goal on a daily basis. Being responsive, professional, transparent, understanding of customers' need, and helping them to get to yes. That's the ultimate goal for us every day. See, click, fix is another good addition to providing great customer service. We also have something I've had for many years called the sunset rule. The sunset rule means any and all inquiries need to be responded before the sunset of the next business day, and we try to comply with that every day. If you see differently, let me know, please. Before I send it to our project, I'm division managers, a little bit about some of the bigger accomplishments. We have, with the help of everyone here and your support, we obtained millions of dollars of grant money for our projects. Some of them is going on right now and will continue for years to come. Some of the projects that have been in the books for a long time are being done as we speak. Our Avenue Roundabout construction is in design right now. It'll be constructed this year. Commercial Avenue Roundabout, we have talked about it only for over 20 years. It is in design right now. Hopefully, it will be constructed next year. We have good amount of grant money, and we plan to ask even for more grant money on that one. I know chip ceiling and pavement of roads is your priorities. You hear from people all the time. We really have developed a very good aggressive program. We spent about $400,000 last year. We are going to spend $2,400,000 this year, and we are going to make sure we spend it all. If you have any more money to spare, we can spend that as well. The old water plant demo project is in progress. It'll be done this year. The outfall project, we are making really good progress with obtaining the required permits. My hope is we start the project this year as well, with the fish window. Yes, we're very hopeful, Councilman Walters. There's so many other things to talk about. I really can talk about Public Works all night, but Mayor again gave me very little time. Ninety minutes is not enough. Now, it is my pleasure to invite here Mr. Brian Walker to update you on what's going on in wastewater treatment plant division.
Counsel, Mayor, thank you. I'm here to give you a quick update on the wastewater treatment plant and what we've been doing for the last quarter. So we'll start with the staffing. Erin Gold, she'll be testing for her operator's license, and she will, once licensed, round out full complement of nine operators. We're also advertising for a much-needed plant cleanup and summer maintenance technician. We've got fingers crossed that we'll be hiring that person soon and get the plant shined up and looking good. And the third comment there is basically just an opener for me to give credit where credit's due, which is to the people who have staffed this facility for the last three decades. I took this job four months ago to operate a 30-year-old wastewater treatment plant, and I wasn't quite sure what I was going to find when I looked under the hood, but I have been nothing but pleasantly surprised. Anacortes has a great resource, not only in its facility, but in the people that have staffed the facility, and it's in fantastic shape. And a big part of what my job is moving forward is just continuing that culture of excellence that has gotten us to where we are so far. So, moving forward, this last quarter, we had 100% effluent and incinerator compliance. We had zero CSOs and zero bypasses. It was a good quarter. We've installed new incinerator expansion joints and purchased new mercury removal modules, investments that will help keep us in compliance for the coming years. We repaired a forced main leak out at March's Point out by the golf course. And again, credit where credit's due, the operations staff, like a military surgical tactical team, got that excavated and allows us, allowed us to get that repaired without any kind of spill to our bay. We upgraded our chlorine analyzers. We went from our old amperometric probes to some new color metric probes, reduced, or excuse me, got rid of a lot of problems with those old probes, and allowed us to reduce callouts and reduce our hypochloride dosage by hopefully 20% at $1.15 a gallon, soon to be much more. The project is expected to pay for itself in about a year. We also just recently, within the last two weeks, conducted, excuse me, within the last month, conducted operator training with Callan and Brooks, AKA Paul Clopping, a nationally-recognized expert in activated sludge and nutrient removal. Got all of the CEUs for all of our operators, plus a couple other folks in the city, to help maintain their licenses, and got some much-needed education for the crew now that we're all clearly in the business of nutrient removal. Projects in motion this quarter. We're moving forward with receiving $127,000 in grant money to help directly fund the nutrient reduction optimization, and we've submitted the first annual nutrient optimization report to the Department of Ecology. We'll be reviewing the nutrient reduction evaluation. Both of those reports, a substantial amount of engineering, were also funded by a previous Department of Ecology grant. We're purchasing two new clarifier drive units and currently bidding the installation. The goal is to complete that installation by mid-October. We're also purchasing two new anoxic mixers, also with the goal of having them installed this summer. We completed the annual incinerator maintenance shutdown and did all the necessary work to keep that machine running, burning, for another year. And we're continuing to survey and assess the service life and the capacity of this critical component of the wastewater process, and come up with a good and clear answer to the very common question of how much longer that piece of equipment is going to serve us. And of course, we're continuing regular replacement of critical pumps and components, a lot of the rotating equipment that is at or approaching the end of its service life. Looking forward, the O-word, outfall, outfall, outfall. The wastewater department, along with Henry, along with the engineering department, along with operations and everyone else, is doing everything that we can to make sure that we have an opportunity to start digging this fall. We're also assuming ownership of pump station 24, and we are beginning engineering for upgrades of three other lift stations, pump station three, pump station four, and pump station 16. We're replacing the in-street vault lid at the skyline conveyance at the corner of Anaco and 20. And we're continuing to research needed upgrades for septicage receiving. We're currently on track to meet or exceed last year's four and a half million gallons of septicage received, which represents about $600,000 in tipping fees for the city. We're also beginning the transition to Cartograph for asset management, transitioning away from Antero with the help of the GIS department. That process is probably going to take us a year, maybe more. Looking forward to that. And last but not least, we're looking forward to our first Public Works Open House, which will be June 1st down at the wastewater treatment plant. Don't take my word for what's going on at the wastewater treatment plant. I encourage everybody to come down and see for yourselves. Thank you.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, yes, it's the Brian Show. It's the Brian and Brian Show. Good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the public. I'm pleased to be here this evening to provide you an update on the water system and some of the activities that we've been working on. Of course, water is our favorite subject. I'd like to start off by mentioning how rewarding it is to work with such a talented group of individuals in the Water Department. This dedicated group produced and delivered 6.5 billion gallons of potable drinking water to the community that met or exceeded state and federal drinking water standards in 2022. It's pretty impressive. We have posted our 2022 Consumer Confidence Report on the city's website. This is our badge of honor of our high-quality drinking water that's been produced. Basically, the, what's in the label content of our annual drinking water report. Talking about staff, the City of Anacortes is one of 10 Level 4 drinking water treatment plants in the state of Washington. Level 4 is the highest level of plant. We are currently looking to fill a position of a Level 3 drinking water operator that has been created due to a retirement. Of note, in Washington State, at last count, there are less than 110 certified Level 4 operators. Out of the 3,000-plus operators in the state, as of today, the City of Anacortes employs five of those Level 4 operators. So we're very hopeful that our culture of an upward dynamic and in certification will attract more high-level operators. As of late, we had a recent operator pass his Level 4 exam, which we're super delighted to have. It kind of represents the culture and the synergy of that upward certification that we promote here at the City of Anacortes. In addition to the staffing with the water plant, our water distribution, we had a position which we reclassified to a quality control technician. This is the focus on water quality programs within the city. This was an internal promotion. Mike Henson was moved into that position, which created a water distribution operator position vacancy, which was filled from a reclassification from an internal applicant. Effectively, at the end of the day, the FTE increase was a net zero, so it was all internal movement. So that's what the Water Department's been working on with staffing. Couple of projects in motion I want to highlight. As we all know, that we're working on getting the former water treatment plant demolition project kicked off. Staff has been working very hard to work through that procurement process with legal and the rest of the team. We've also launched the Crayley Leak Detection Program. There was a lot of information out about that. We're about 90% through that project, and we are live and online. Tying into that Crayley project, there is a piece of the Oak Harbor Fiber Project that will be connected to that Crayley Leak Detection. Currently, we've got the pipe, the fiber in a lot of the pipe out there, about 80% done with that portion. We installed some aerial cable, and then the last component will be the underground section of that, and we're waiting on a wash dot permit to get that work started. We are also working on, out at the water treatment plant, we brought before you a failure we had on our 36-inch transmission main. That transmission main has a temporary repair installed in it. It is currently functioning, and it's fine. We're working through the evaluation process of what's next for that, that repair to make it final. Water System Plan, an exciting project that we brought forward, that we're working on, that we are getting ready to launch our new hydraulic water model. This is a very valuable tool for the water system to help us identify growth projections and also identify capital projects that we can put in our 20-year planning document. Really excited to get that new water model. That's something that's actually going to be operated in-house versus going exterior, so we're really excited about that piece of software and launching that program. Also, the advanced metering infrastructure, we came to you, and we are working toward upgrading our water meters to an antenna-fixed base water meter reading system. That work continues. We're working currently on launching the installation of four antennas to start collecting that information. We have one in place right now, collecting roughly about 3,000 reads with the antenna. The water treatment plant power emergency, last year, about a year and some months ago, the water treatment plant suffered catastrophic failure with the electrical transformer to the intake station. We are currently still operating underneath emergency. We are waiting to secure a contractor to come in and replace that transformer. We procured the transformer, and we're hoping that work starts soon, very soon. What we're looking forward to, I mentioned the Consumer Confidence Report. We're really proud of the water that's produced and delivered to the community. It's a, it's a wonderful report this year. I was really proud to see the old Whistle Lake Water Plant on the cover of it. That's, that's going to be notified that that's published and out on the website. The water quality assessment that the team's been working on is a, is a critical project where the crews have been learning how to clean water mains, actually pipe-clean water mains. You may have seen some information coming out about some water main flushing, and we are working through a couple of different techniques about evaluating the best way and most efficient way to clean our water mains to keep and continue producing that high-quality drinking water. And then the South Fidalgo Island Water System acquisition, we have a tentative transfer date of August 1st. There's a significant amount of work that's going on behind the scenes with both legal and the transfer of that system from the Skagit PUD to the city. We're hoping that that transfer happens August 1st, and again, I'm going to mention that is a tentative date. We're working toward trying to achieve that. And then finally, I want to reiterate something about that synergistic feel that we create here at the City of Anacortes for the employees to actually look forward to coming to work every day. We have a great team of individuals in the distribution group that have participated in what's called the Water Olympics. They actually take apart water meters and put them together in a timed event in addition to a fire hydrant. Our great team, distribution team, is going to be representing the Pacific Northwest section of Washington in Kennewick this year, assembling a fire hydrant. So we like to continue that, that positive culture and wish our teams well. And that's it for me. So thank you very much. And up next, we have Will Ludeman from our operations department.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, public. I'm Will Ludeman, operations manager for Public Works. And we have a couple different departments under operations today to show you, and we have facilities. Some of the stuff we've been doing in facilities this year was rebuild and expand one of our sheds we just park our large equipment in. Our sewer vac truck, we just received our replacement this, last week. And everything's getting bigger these days, so the new piece of equipment doesn't, didn't fit in the old shed, so we got that bumped out just in time for the new one to show up. It'll also house, the Water Department's hydro excavation truck will receive later this year, early next year. We worked, facilities and fleet worked together on a generator sound attenuation addition at the library, which is now complete. We worked together, fleet and facilities, also for specking and preparing the generator replacement at the police department, which has been about a two-year process with acquisitions and procurement. Facilities worked with the PD to install cameras around town, and this just kind of shows some of the oddball projects facility gets pulled into for different departments in the city. It's kind of fun. Our fleet, we turned one replacement vehicle into two new vehicles by saving some costs by doing a build-in house for our wildfire truck. It's been a fun project for our fleet staff to work on. They're just about three quarters of the way through building that right now, and the bonus vehicle we got out of that was an EMS rescue rig for the fire, well, sorry, for the forest lands, little side-by-side UTV. That was designed in the intenuator for the library. This last year, we specced and upfit 13 new and replacement pieces of equipment placed in the service in the city. So thankfully, we have our replacement fund, and those things get replaced every single year, and we try to do most of our outfits in-house. We've been successful with that. Overall, the fleet maintains about 420 pieces of equipment. That's everything from a chainsaw to a ladder truck, everything in between goes through the shop. This last year, in solid waste, they collected 10,321 tons of garbage, and 51% of that was commercial, 49% residential, and 47% residential recycling rate in town. And that number seems to stay pretty consistent through over the years I've seen. Street Storm Sewer Conveyance, the street department had a major snow event we took care of in December, just before Christmas. I'm sure everybody remembers that. And we were pretty proud that we got to keep downtown open for shopping. We got the loaders downtown and cleared the snow. We had five Plowz and Sanders out around the clock for a couple days. There's a couple new sidewalk projects we just did. One of them was Ninth Street from Q to R, kind of connecting downtown to the marina. It's a good project we got accomplished. New crosswalk with a rapid flashing beacon around the corner from Operation Shop, crossing the road to the forest lands there, A Avenue. And we had our first successful season with our RC mower. If you haven't seen that, there's a picture of it here. It's a remote-controlled mower that we got last year on a partial grant. It really helps us on steep slopes and ponds, and it's really saved a lot of time, which we didn't think it'd save as much time as it would injuries, but the time savings has been tremendous for us. It's been great. And then the last project was a 500-foot sidewalk we just replaced on M Avenue along Whitney School. Whitney School, which part of that was underwater part of the winter, and the other part had a really bad trip hazard in it, so we just got that taken care of. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ludeman. I have one quick question about the recycling rate. When you say 47% recycling rate, what does that mean exactly?
I think that's the tonnage, residential tonnage, recycling versus garbage. Those numbers we get through waste management.
So it's 47% of our material goes into recycling, and then 53 goes into?
Solid waste.
Solid waste landfill.
That's what I'm understanding, yes.
That seems really great and high.
That's the number around there. I've seen as high as 49, I think, over the years. Before I was even in this position, I remember seeing the numbers about the same.
Wow, well, go Anacortes. Good job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. GIS Asset Management Group, as you know, we're primarily support division for Public Works, but we also do mapping for all the other departments in the city. We just kicked off our See, Click, Fix app to the public this month, so we are starting to now see requests come in from the public. And with the A-Town newsletter coming out, there's a how-to to get involved, so hopefully we'll see more people get involved with that. As Brian Walker was saying, we're converting the wastewater treatment plant's request work order system into Cartograph. Cartograph's our big asset management program, and over the last five years, we have slowly worked all of Public Works divisions into that system, so they're all in one package. And then our last group, Water Distribution Materials, we're taking our last access database and moving it into the Cartograph system also. That tracks all materials for water distribution. Also, with the water treatment or water department, we've been assisting with water bottling with primarily mapping. Also, in Cartograph, we are now, my assistant, Marley, is doing monthly how-tos and trainings with all the divisions in Public Works, which has been very helpful for those that are using the software. They have time to ask questions and get new tips and tricks. Also, she just got some AutoCAD training, which helped, so we're putting that in our budget, and we're slowly moving into a new GIS program in the next year because the system we're using is phasing out. No more cost to the, you know, to the budget, but it's a new program, so we're going to have to learn that, so that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
And here's Tim from Engineering.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of the council, members of the public. I'm Tim Mahoman, the city engineer, and I'm here to talk about the engineering division. The engineering division is two, can kind of be divided into two different parts. We have the engineering division itself, and we also have the stormwater division that's part of ourselves, and to use the term synergistic that my esteemed colleague did, we work really well together to serve the public. The engineering division's made up of eight staff, one engineer, five engineering technicians, project managers, and two stormwater professionals. The, I wanted to share a few things that we completed last year in the engineering department, as well as talk about some of the things we have going this year, in the early part of this year. The big success we had that everyone probably saw out of the engineering department this year was the 32nd and M intersection improvements. So we completed a roundabout at 32nd and M that is both a safety improvement and a capacity improvement. That project was 100% grant-funded and finished on time and under budget, so we're pretty happy about that. Another project that we're really happy to be assisting the fiber department with is the Glamis View Fiber Expansion. The engineering department has taken over the construction management of that portion of the fiber backbone install. So we're putting in the conduits and assisting with getting the wires put in so that fiber can come and hook the homes up. And we're about, well, when I put this together, we're about 40% complete. I actually just today saw that we're closing real close in on 100% complete with the backbone installation in that area. We also, in the engineering department, we assist all the other divisions with their larger projects that are contracted out, and one of the things we do every year is waterline replacements. So we're placing 50- to 100-year-old water lines with new, modern materials. In 2022, we completed about 6,300 linear feet in the Skyline area at Sands Way and Parkside Neighborhood, as well as up along Puget Way. As I'll talk about in a little bit, we're going to be paving that area, so we like to get the utilities done before we do the paving so that we can avoid digging up the brand-new pavement. So this year, we're going to be installing, once again, a little bit over 6,000 linear feet of water main along Kingsway out in Skyline, as well as Fidalgo Avenue. Both those areas are being evaluated for pavement and resurfacing in the next year or so, so we're prepping for that. One of the things that we've been doing more and more of in the engineering department is chip sealing. We find that chip seal is a lot of bang for the buck. We're able to fix roads that are in pretty bad shape, and we're able to do them about three or four times the amount of roads with chip sealing as we do with conventional asphalt. So in 2022, we were able to fix some really bad roads, 37th Street near the store, as well as O Avenue and Whistle Lake Road, so that was about a mile. In 2023, we're looking to expand that project in the Q Avenue corridor from 20th to 35th, as well as looking to improve Fidalgo Bay Road, and we're looking to do about five-and-a-half miles of chip seal this coming year. We also do an annual paving project every year, like Mr. Hash talked about, and this year, we're looking to pave that area where we did the water lines last year, so we're looking at the Skyline Way, Sands Way, and Parkside Neighborhood. So we're looking to do some neighborhood streets, as well as the Collector Street that is Skyline Way. We also do sewer lining projects, and we're going to have multiple this year, but the first one is actually out to bid right now. You'll be seeing it coming forward, as well as a couple of these other projects in the next few weeks, and we're doing a sewer lining project in what we call the E Avenue Basin around Storbit Park, so that's going to really help out Will's group in operations, where they have to go in and cut roots out on a regular basis. We're going to line those pipes trenchlessly, so without having to dig up the ground, we'll put a new liner in those pipes and cure it in place and be able to hopefully reduce the maintenance requirement there. Couple of other projects that we have going, our big project, like Mr. Hash said, is our R Avenue long-term improvement project, which will improve the whole R Avenue corridor, including a new roundabout at 30th Street, and that's a grant-funded project. We're also working with, we also serve not just the Public Works Department, but we serve all the departments in the city, so we're working with the Parks Department on the Ben Ruth Skate Park. We've helped them with the design. We're going to really help them a lot with the construction management. I know that's out to bid right now. I think it opens this week. You'll probably see it in the next couple of weeks coming before you. And we also, this last year, helped the fiber department with their EDA area site certification. That was a really big project that people aren't going to see much until the fiber goes in the ground, but we needed to identify all, how the city acquired all the right-of-way in that whole area. So that's about a third of the town, more or less, and we had to find how each and every piece of right-of-way was acquired by the city and be able to certify that as a part of that grant process. That was a big, hard work by both the fiber, the legal, and the engineering department. Great working together. The engineering department's proud to announce that in 2022, we were awarded over $5 million in transportation grant money. Actually, I looked at that again today, and I think it's a little closer to maybe even $6 million. So that's been great, and we're looking to continue that this year with multiple transportation grants. And then I wanted to not neglect the stormwater department. They also had one of the things we're really proud of this year, that being the Mount Erie Elementary Rain Garden. That was a project that was completed in partnership, and I'm going to make sure I talk about all of them, between the city, the school district, the Northwest Straits Foundation, the Skagit Marine Resources, Holly Frontier, and Azusa Plant Nursery. So the city, the operations department excavated for that rain garden that was put on school district property in the turnaround at Mount Erie School, and it was excavated by the operations department. It was funded by a grant from Holly Frontier to cover all the costs. Azusa helped with design, as well as discounting some plants, and students and families from the school district came together and planted and maintained that, so that was a real win. Also, the school district's able to, in cooperation with the stormwater division and with the Skagit Watershed Council and the Skagit Conservation District, to use that rain garden as part of their education plan for the elementary school to teach kids about how to keep rainwater clean and not have it, dirty water end up in the bay. One other thing that we wanted to, I wanted to talk about with the stormwater department is the source control program that we implemented with the help of you, council, last year, and that's a requirement of our municipal stormwater permit, but that will involve inspection of existing businesses to help, to ensure that they are doing onsite practices to help keep the water clean that runs off their sites. So that can be real simple, as closing dumpster lids, or having spill kits onsite, or making sure they're not cleaning floor mats outside so that water stays clean when it runs to the bay. And one of our things we're excited about is, part of implementing that source control program is we brought onboard our stormwater inspector, Inspector Aaron Estreholz, to help implement that program. He's a, we're really proud to have him. He has a strong background in municipal stormwater and facility inspections, and he's already, he's only been with us, I think, less than a month, and he's already dove right into developing that program. He's completed, I think, three inspections already of the 40 we're required to make this year, and I think he said he'll probably have two more by the end of the week. But he's really come with a lot of great ideas on how he can do outreach and education and help people understand why he's coming to their business and talking to them about stormwater. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Looks like Mr. Hash is going to come wrap it up and?
And talk quick. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks again for the opportunity that you gave us to come to you and talk a little bit about what's happening in Public Works. Thank Brian, Brian Will Robb, Tim and Sidney for being here. These are some of the most professionals I've seen. It's really been a pleasure to work with all of them every day, so thank you. Thank you all, and they make my life and my job easy, and they make me look good, and they accomplish quite a bit. And I also want to thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me the opportunity to be part of this wonderful organization. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have. We're all here.
All right, you got any questions? That was a lot of great information, but? Mr. Walters?
Thank you for the presentation. There are so many projects that Public Works is working on. We hear about them, but we don't necessarily have the ability to track them all through their progress, so being able to get a quarterly update from you, I think, will be really valuable, especially because we have so many big projects as well, the water treatment plant demolition, the wastewater outfall project, and all of the others. Definitely hear from people that they get excellent service from Public Works, so, Henry, I'm really glad you haven't interrupted that since your new tenure here. And I really encourage people, if they see any problem related to any of these things that they've just seen the presentation about tonight, to give us a call, you know, get ahold of us, figure out, follow up. We'll fix it. Don't just sit there at home and complain about it. Couple potholes on my street that I should report, because I know that Public Works will be right out there to take care of them, and really appreciate that service, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, again, great, great presentation, and we will do our best. I know Public Works Committee stays very well informed, but I know this quarterly report is very helpful to the other council members, and we'll keep it up, so thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on to A-Town 8D. 8D is ordinance 4045. It's Title IX update. This is a discussion item with possible action, and it is open for public comment. And Ms. Swetnam, I'm sure, and Chief Floyd, but Ms. Swetnam, as your PowerPoint is loading.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council, members of the audience. So tonight is a second read on ordinance 4045, which is a rewrite of the city's Title IX, and as the mayor mentioned, Chief Floyd is here as well, and so I will just provide a brief reintroduction, since it's been two weeks since we talked about this, talk about the changes to the draft ordinance that was in your packet tonight, and then we're both happy to answer any questions that you have. So to review, there were a couple of issues that necessitated the rewrite of Title IX, and we talked about these last time, but there is an opportunity pursuant to RCW Section 35100, by which the city can capture fees that are imposed by the municipal court if they're referenced in our municipal ordinances, including RCW crimes, which we previously haven't incorporated by reference. So this is also an opportunity to clarify an issue that we've discovered with our bail schedule, to clarify that penalties listed in the code don't include additional assessments like state fees. This is also a chance to address the recent changes in dealing with controlled substances in response to State versus Blake, which invalidated state law that made possession of a controlled substance a strict liability offense, meaning that no knowledge was required to charge somebody with possession. There was a response to that by the state legislature at RCW Section 103115 that prohibited law enforcement from arresting someone for unlawful possession of a controlled substance until the offender had been referred to social services on two separate occasions. So to review, the draft ordinance 4045 rewrites Title IX. Again, this is the chapter structure, which I will not read to you, but this is how the title will read moving forward. Some noteworthy provisions that we talked about last time, but you'll see a lot of the ordinance that incorporates by reference criminal violations that are referred to RCW sections. Finally, again, I mentioned before, there was the addition of Section 902030D and the kind of general provisions that clarifies unless otherwise provided, any penalties identified in this title do not include fees, costs, and assessment, which would be additions. The new crimes that were created in the draft ordinance that were presented two weeks ago included Section 922030 that prohibited the use of controlled substances in public places, not just public property, but those places that are open to the public. not just public property, but those places that are open to the public, and made that violation a gross misdemeanor. Additionally, Section 922040 made it a misdemeanor to unlawfully deposit controlled substances or paraphernalia on the ground or in bodies of water. So those are new crimes. And I brought this up last week, and I'll bring it up again, although it is not reflected in the draft that's in the packet, but there was a proposed change to Section 950070, which relates to trespass on city property. And the structure of the trespass sections provide that if somebody engages in behavior that's described and prohibited in the code, they can be excluded from city property for a period of time, and any violation of that exclusion would subject them to charges under trespass. The way that the draft is written now, it provides sort of a sliding scale for the length of that exclusion. If there were no violations in the previous year, the exclusion would be up to seven days. One violation could be up to a 90-day exclusion, and two or more violations in the previous year could lead to up to a one-year exclusion. The recommendation from the police department was to replace the sliding scale language that's in the draft with an exclusion for a year, so that it makes it easier for the police to administer when they're out responding. They don't have to identify, you know, if there had been previous exclusions within the past year. So there just have been a couple of changes since the last reading. The first was the addition of Section 902060 that encourages but does not require the use of therapeutic courts. We've talked about that. That's drug court that requires people charged to engage in substance abuse disorder treatment or some other treatment that's prescribed by the court. And there are some additional new citations to crimes that are provided for in the RCW sections. So those are my comments for tonight, and Chief Floyd and I are happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Okay. Thank you. And before I turn it over to council for questions, this is open for public comment, so I want to turn it over to the public if they have any comments or they would like to address. And before I turn it over to council, I think everybody on council knows the legislature is working on what we're, I think, everybody referring to as the Blake Fix, but I think in the meantime, this is appropriate action for the council to take on, so I appreciate the work that's been put in so far. So, council. Mr. Walters.
And I understand that the Blake Fix Bill that's moving through the legislature would likely include a prohibition on use of controlled substances in public, which is what we're proposing to adopt here tonight, and it would preempt our adoption of a crime for the same thing, which is fine. They may or may not adopt that. If they do, the current bill text, I think, at least as of this morning, characterized as a misdemeanor rather than a gross misdemeanor, so, you know, it's their choice. We would repeal this section, assumably, if they do, in fact, enact that. But also, they might not, so I would recommend we proceed anyway. We can probably find other crimes to include by reference in the AMC Title IX, but we've added quite a few additional ones from two weeks ago, try to cover all the bases. Hopefully, there's nothing out there that we would like to charge that isn't listed there. Community court, I do think, is important, and that provision encouraging its use, I think, is pretty critical, especially when we're talking about drug crimes. Our objective should be to get people into treatment for drug use and also not to tolerate it. One other notable one is the prohibition on open carry of firearms in city council chambers. That's an existing state law, but we do need to put up a sign. Facilities could get on that. Public Works touches everything. Maybe facilities could get on that. As a general matter, I think this is mostly housekeeping with these notable exceptions, and we'll streamline things, and that's pretty much always what we should be seeking to do. So I would urge us to move this forward.
Other questions, comments from council?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I had a question on the sliding scale, the exclusion sliding scale. Are there, and probably for the chief, are there existing scenarios where there is like a sliding scale similar to this, where, you know, some sort of lookup has to be done? And just sort of level of difficulty, like what sort of tool is used for that? Is there a spreadsheet somewhere? Is it a database? Is there an existing kind of thing like that?
As it applies to the trespassing statute, there is not currently a sliding scale. Any private property trespassing is for one year with the current practice we've been using. We've been using that same practice for city-owned facilities. One advantage that I do see with this proposal is the creation of an appeals process for individuals, and with the existence of an appeals process, if the one-year exclusion seems a bit harsh for the offense committed, I think that they have a means to try to shorten that period of time that they would be excluded from the city on premise.
Okay. Got it. So the existing residential one-year exclusion, that still involves a tracking mechanism anyway, I suppose, because you have to keep track of when the clock starts, when it ends, that sort of thing?
We track that through our records management system.
Through the records management. Okay. Great. So similarly, a sliding scale could be implemented in that. It's just some additional overhead.
The issue with the sliding scale is determining with the previous offenses on city-owned property or not, and the number of offenses within the one-year period.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Yeah, so my question is related to Mr. McDougal. So do we have, I don't know if you can answer this off the top of your head, but do we have a lot of existing trespass, people who have been trespassed from private property? Are we talking like a dozen or 100? Do we know?
The majority of our trespassing cases are from retail establishments for individuals that have been involved with theft complaints from those establishments, or just general disorderly conduct at those establishments.
Okay. Thanks.
So now he's not going to guess at a number.
That's just fair.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, motions? Mr. Walters.
And the reason we included the sliding scale is because that's what's in the model provided by MRSC from Port Townsend, and also because it is one of those elements of due process with respect to public facilities, because people do have some right to access public facilities for interaction with their government, which is why in the section that we adopted so, not very long ago, I guess, but last year, there's these provisions for if you must access City Hall to, I don't know, speak at a council meeting. There's got to be some provision for you to be able to do that, to exercise your right to lobby your representatives, those kinds of things. So there's this heightened scrutiny associated with public, well, with government facilities. But assumably, the police are keeping track of who's excluded from public facilities, because if you encounter them at one, you need to be able to refer to that list and remove them. Anyway, so I think we've done quite a bit of work here, and I'm hoping that this will be a substantial improvement in any number of ways, especially if, you know, we try to be more aggressive in implementation of some of these crimes. So this is our second reading. I would move approval of the ordinance as presented.
Okay. I've got a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton to approve Ordinance 4045, Title IX Updates. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, could you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. And if you thought we were finished, we added an agenda item 8E, which is Resolution 3117, collective bargaining agreement between City of Anacortes and Teamsters Local 231. And this will be Ms. Nguyen, who's already at the podium, but doesn't quite have the PowerPoint up. But you made it. Ms. Nguyen, when you're ready.
All right. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the audience. Tonight, I'd like to present to you regarding our ongoing collective bargaining, and more specifically, our Teamsters Union Local 231 negotiations. How I can go ahead and move Ms. Hubick? At the city, we have three bargaining units and four collective bargaining agreements representing the majority of our employees. We participate in the collective bargaining process with each of these units regarding mandatory subjects, including wages, hours, and working conditions, as well as permissive subjects. You can see that each of these contracts are on unique cycles. Both the police guild contracts and the firefighter contracts were settled for ratification in the last year. These agreements can be found on our website. Teamsters contract expired at the end of December 2022, hence the need for bargaining. Teamsters is our largest bargaining unit in the city with 115 members approximately. This contract supports a wide variety of professions, including employees in our fiber, finance, library, municipal court, museum, parks and recreation, planning, and public works departments. This diversity in profession requires varying needs to be addressed during the contract negotiations. Bargaining for this contract began in October of 2022 and continued into 2023. During that time, we continued to operate under the expired contract. On March 24th, the parties reached a tentative agreement. The primary and most economically related items negotiated upon can be seen here in the table that I've listed as a summary. These include wage increases, increases in shift differential, on-call pay, the life insurance policy, the addition of vacation for our provisional part-time employees, a boot allowance increase, and the addition of our CDL reimbursement. Our cumulative costs on top of our status quo, or our existing costs, over the life of the three-year contract are just over $2 million, and our finance director just let me know that this is about 30% covered, our payroll is about 30% covered by utilities. On April 6th, the Teamsters membership voted to ratify the contract, and we'd like this agreement to be effective as of April 16th, 2023. To do so, city staff recommends that the Anacortes City Council adopt Resolution 3117, authorizing the signature and execution of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Anacortes and Teamsters Union Local Number 231 from April 16th, 2023 through December 31st, 2025. And with that, I'm happy to address any questions that you have.
Thank you, council. Questions from Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. We discussed this and took no action at our executive session, and I feel like we got a really good picture of what went into it and all the work that was done, and I feel that it was, it's a really successful outcome. And if there are no further comments, I would move to approve Resolution Number 3117 to authorize the signature and execution of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Anacortes and Teamsters Union Local Number 231.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve Resolution 3117. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Thank you for following up with Mr. Hoagland with respect to the amount of money that's covered by the utilities. The amount of money that isn't covered by the utilities is covered by general revenue and various other smaller revenue sources, so apparently, we're looking at about $1.4 million. I certainly think that if you don't pay employees a fair wage, you're not going to have good employees, or you're not going to have employees at all. So I think that we have to provide cost of living adjustments that make up the gap in what their purchasing power is after being eroded by inflation. But where do we get the $1.4 million?
I would defer to our finance director on that.
I would, too. I only mention it because obviously, we're going to have to fill that gap, and we're going to have to fill it going forward, and our property tax doesn't increase, our revenue doesn't increase but by $50,000 each year, and that money just doesn't become available. So it will continue to be a challenge, and, again, it's what we need to do in order to be able to provide these services. It's the cost of doing business. I just want to raise it for everybody's attention, because you don't get these services for free.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Okay. A motion again by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick approving Resolution 3117. Mr. Franciac, could you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, and no further business before the council. I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thanks for the work.